Good evening. Welcome to the August 26, 2024 School Board Work Session. The time is now 7:55. The School Board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Nai people, and our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe, supportive environment, so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett is on Zoom.
I'm here.
Mr. Doran? Ms. Maple?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. The board has a quorum.
I can start us off work session. This is our opportunity to talk to each other is the reason why we're having this, and Monday next week wouldn't work because it is a holiday. So needed to book it when we could. The purpose is, as we talked about at our evaluation kind of retreat that happened before school got out, maybe it was after, feels like everything's going by really fast. It was after. Some of the things that were kind of remaining was discussing public testimony, guardrails, ways that we want to consider going forward there, as well as our resolution process and all of those things. And I can start out with my thinking is I would also really like us to focus on how we can make our meetings efficient and effective as part of this too, and really putting the work of the board first, especially focusing on what's best for our students, and making sure we get through all the work without keeping us up till like midnight some nights. Kind of my framework where I'm coming from. Did people want to start with talking about resolutions first or talking about public testimony? Anybody have a? All right. So if we start with resolutions, Ms. Richardson printed out all of our resolutions all the way back to 2020, I think. Is it 2000? I've seen over here it says 2020. As far as ones that we have repeatedly voted to honor, those are highlighted in yellow. And we can give people time to look through that. And I think kind of framing questions, and this is from me, but people might have other ideas, around, I know leftover from when I entered the board, how we propose new resolutions, how those come in front of the board and the process for that is something still kind of shaky. And then as well as resolutions that we have consistently approved year after year, if we want to talk about moving those to a consent agenda and having them approved that way, and then either reading them as part of information as reports or as part of some other manner, or if we still want to continue the practice of every year considering and voting on every single resolution. Ms. Maple?
I would love to see, rather than it be, you know, necessarily what's been approved many times, I think the consistency we can see is resolutions that honor a specific month, a week, or a day are the ones that are repeatedly, repeatedly come before us. I think that moving them to the consent agenda would be appropriate. I think that we have, you know, in working through our policies most recently, that we have, you know, we have procedure in place for if a board member wanted one to be reconsidered, that we now, you know, in our bylaws, we know what it would take to get that to be an agenda item. So it's not like moving them to the consent agenda by default would mean that nothing could ever be reconsidered, that we could never stop honoring a resolution or renewing a resolution every year. And, oh, I had one more thing. And if there was the desire to have that be finite, I wouldn't, you know, that like it's, it goes to the, once it's approved, it goes to the consent agenda for the, the next five years, and then automatically needs to be renewed. I don't necessarily think it's necessary, but if there is opposition to the idea of it going on the consent agenda, I think there's room to find a middle ground if need be. Those are my thoughts initially.
Ms. Marotti?
Thanks. I to support moving annual past resolutions, the ones that come up every year, to the consent agenda because, and not because, but, but it's been brought to my attention from the community many times. However, I would still, I also hear from the community that by reading them, it reaffirms them. I'm wondering if we could consider putting them on the consent agenda, which it gets them approved annually, and then at the next meeting have them under reports. There's no testimony usually during reports. Am I getting that right? And so it doesn't take up as much time, makes things a little, little more efficient, but still honors both sides of that perspective. Yeah, that's what I have for now. Oh, I'm sorry. As for the process, I just email it to the board president and superintendent who have the, I think that's what it is in policy, right? Like who have the say on who or on what goes on the agenda. So I'm interested in other ideas if that's not the one that we go with.
Ms. Maple?
Sorry, just for, for something to be, help me refresh my memory, but if I want to put something on the agenda and I go to you and I don't get, you don't say, okay, I need two additional board members?
I believe, yes, we settled on three total.
Three total. So if something's on the consent agenda, do we operate in the same way that Assembly does, that at the beginning of the meeting, I could move to amend the agenda to remove something from the consent agenda?
Then you'd need a second and then a vote, correct?
So that would?
It would be a no objection.
It would be, that would be a?
To take, just to take it off, and then it would become part of the, the last item on our business.
But if there is an objection, we'd hold a roll call vote. And then, so if the majority of the board didn't want it pulled from the consent agenda, then it would not be pulled.
Okay.
Excuse me. If you guys could use your mics, because I, I can't hear you very well, and I'm thinking that Jasmine
Thank you.
is having a hard time recording as well. Thank you.
So, so while it wouldn't actually require the three people like I thought, like there would be a loophole, but it then could potentially require a vote of the whole to have it removed from the consent agenda?
It could. If somebody objects, then maybe I'm wrong. If somebody, so say I wanted something removed from the consent agenda, I could say, you know, move to have XYZ removed from the consent agenda, and someone else can second, and then somebody else could object.
And then it would go to a full vote? Okay.
But if there's no objection?
Then it's just removed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Marotti?
Where are the new policies located? Because I'm looking at the current policies in board docs, and they're not in there.
It's the, you want me?
They're on Policy Online. So, and the new policies, like the board bylaws are Article 9, which are at the bottom of the policy manual.
BoardPolicyOnline.com/ B= Fairbanks.
Already lost me. Sorry.
I'll send you a link.
It should be linked to from our actual website.
So while everybody's doing what they're doing, I'm going to chime in real quick. I actually would be in favor of moving any of these onto the consent agenda. The only thing that I would suggest is we do this with all resolutions. So if we're going to put one on the consent agenda, all resolutions go to the consent agenda. It kind of keeps it uniform and clean. Now, that doesn't mean a board member cannot, again, ask to have it removed, and then we can do that process and then have it down in our reports or wherever it goes after that, our business or whatnot. But I, I do strongly feel that whatever we do decide to do with a chunk of them, we do with all of them.
Ms. Maple?
Do you mean all new ones? Just anything that's, or I'm sorry, any recurring ones?
Yeah, anything that's recurring. If it's something new, obviously, we would go through that process, submit it to the board president, get it on the agenda, and discuss it that way. But anything that's recurring that we've already honored in past, we would automatically put it on the consent agenda. If a board member wants to discuss said item that we have already, you know, agreed upon in the past, we would move to move it off the consent to discuss it, but otherwise, it would be there for automatic approval.
Ms. Marotti?
Isn't, isn't that what we're looking at? Is the highlighted ones are the reoccurring ones, the non-highlighted ones? Those are just like one-time resolutions that were special for that specific reason at that time, but not typically carried over year to year?
Some of them, but not all of them. So like 2024, we approved Safe and Secure Storage and Firearms and Celebrating School Library Month. Those aren't highlighted because we've only approved them one time. But they could be, because we, if it's been previously approved.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
In that case, I, I do think that those that recognize a month or day or year or whatever, I think those should be, like Ms. Burnett was talking about, they should be rolled over into consent agenda. But to me, it looks like all of the highlighted ones plus the three from 2024. So it's the Celebrating School Library Month, CTE Month, and Attendants Awareness Month. Those ones are not highlighted, but they honor a specific month every year. So in my opinion, I think they should be rolled over into the consent agenda process. But for example, Safe and Secure Storage of Firearms, that was a very important resolution and should stay an approved resolution, but it doesn't talk about a month or day or week.
So follow up with that question. Are you supportive of Safe and Secure Firearms becoming a part of the consent agenda the same way days, months, or weeks would? Or it always coming before the board for an approval?
I think it was one of the, in my opinion, it was something that we wanted to honor at that time. I'm not sure it's a, well, not all resolutions come across every year to year. So I don't think it was intended, and maybe those that were on the resolution subgroup with me could remember better. But I don't think the intent was to bring it up every year, but I could be wrong.
Ms. Maple?
I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Burnett, I can't see your hand, so you can jump in.
Okay. I, I was under the impression this was a resolution that we approved to be approved and, and it would come back up again. And so that, in my opinion, would be something that could go on the consent agenda because we approved it. It's something we all felt good about to approve for our schools. Yes, it's not a day, it's not a month, it's not a history, but it is something that I felt that we would be approving year after year like we do these other ones. So yes, I would like it to be put on the consent agenda.
I, but having been on that committee as well, I have the same understanding as Ms. Burnett and would like to see that one renew. I think it would, rather than saying which ones do renew, it would make more sense to, I don't even know that it needs, we're probably just belaboring it, but it is obvious when something will not, it is, when something is very clearly unique to the year or time it is established that that one will not renew. Anything else would renew each year on the consent agenda and be honored. I like the suggestion, I think it was President Hardy's suggestion, or maybe Ms. Marotti's, to then read it under the next, the reports the next meeting, so that we're still acknowledging it. It's getting airtime, it's getting our attention as it deserves. Yeah.
Ms. Marotti?
I wholly support, sorry, the Safe and Secure Storage of Firearms, misunderstood the intent, but that doesn't mean I don't support it renewing annually. I, I would though like the board to consider a clearer, simpler way to determine which ones go forward and which ones don't. So if it's all of them, like Ms. Burnett said, that sounds great. If it has to have some qualifications, I think we need to be very clear about what those are so that future boards don't do, like, don't misinterpret it and it gets messy.
Mr. Burgess?
I mean, I think that, for me, the clearest way to do that would be that anything, any new resolutions, whether they're going to come up again in a future year or not, if it's new and hasn't been approved in a previous year, that should be read into the record the first time. And not on the consent, consent agenda. But if it's something that has come up before, it's going to keep coming up, I'm fine with those being. So basically, it'd just be, anything that's been done before goes on the consent agenda. If it hasn't been done before, it goes on the regular agenda.
Marotti?
Through the chair, can I ask a question? So would that mean like identifying and recommending FNSB SD Capital Projects to FNSB Capital Improvement Program? Like that wouldn't, would that be something, because it was in the past, then going forward, it wouldn't? Or it would, under that theory?
No, I think that if it's, if it's clearly intended to address a specific, you know, like that, that was done in 2020 for that specific FNSBCIP plan. And so it wouldn't apply again. And I guess if, if maybe we would need that clarification somewhere in the resolution or, I don't know, like I think that, I think the intent, my intent is not, is to, not to read, not to put anything, everything else that was brought up in the past, but things that are going to be recurring. So I guess identifying what's recurring and what's not, sometimes it's more clear than other times, but.
Can I follow up? I think in that case, and maybe this answers Ms. Maple's case as well, is that those that are highlighted, look, except for the ones under 2024, are recurring and not like timestamped for that specific thing. And so then anything highlighted, plus I think some of the ones in 2024, go forward as consent. And then, and then new ones then come to the board for approval. That makes sense to me.
Ms. Maple?
I think the question that you were asking initially, Ms. Marotti, that those, that would look different. Like it wouldn't be an identical resolution. If that came before us again, it would not be an identical resolution because it would be talking about a different fiscal year or a different. So I think that, that what Mr. Burgess suggested, that any renewing resolution, that any new resolution comes before us and any renewing goes on consent agenda would catch those things and would not allow things that shouldn't to make it onto a consent agenda without our new approval because it would be new if it's for a new fiscal year or new if it's a new budget or?
Yes. Going for new resolutions, could, could the board consider whoever brings that resolution to, or for the board to notate, like if it's recurring or one time? Because there still might be things that the board wants to consider that are new that wouldn't be reoccurring, right? And so that would maybe to make things clear going forward for new resolutions, then to notate that somewhere on the resolution or in the motion, or I don't know.
Yeah. I think we could, or my opinion is add something to the end of it since this is new. And my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that we don't have Policy A or AR that really discusses resolutions, how we do it or what they are. So that's why I think we're all feeling a little adrift. Mr. Doran?
First, I want to say thank you for following up with this, and it's been around for years. And it's become more highlighted in recent years. I think that we need to make a real quick distinction between kind of procedural resolutions around budget and CIP. And those, those are not, those are procedural things that are called resolutions, but they're really board actions. I mean, very much that, and so I would not include that in, in this. As I've been thinking about this the last few days, is I'm not wedded to any one process I don't, or procedure. I keep coming back to what's the purpose of our resolution, though? Why do we pass a resolution? And if it's to draw attention to the importance of that for our students, then, then it deserves being clearly acted upon each year in, in my mind. And I'm bringing a couple of things together. One, if it's on a consent agenda and we do highlight it, we read it, that's, that's a possibility that may cut down on time. I would do it at the same meeting, though, because otherwise, if you do it on two meetings, you have two public comments, testimony on it. Because they can testify whether on reports and non-agenda items as such. The, the other thing is then if The, the other thing is then, if, if we don't highlight it, then what does that mean to us? Does it really matter? Does it become a point of contention in the, I don't have an answer. I'm just raising, you know, does it become a point of contention over this consent agenda? Because some, frankly, you know, some of the recurring resolutions have had more, more conversation than typical for one reason or another. There, and that can, sometimes the resolution is creating an awareness that needs to be made or that is appropriate to be made, and we will get a broader community conversation on it. And then it's done, and it's quiet for a while, and then all of a sudden, we get another community conversation. And, and there are different ones on here that I've experienced over the years, some much older than others. So I really come down to, and I'm trying to figure out, what is our purpose in having a resolution? And if it's worth saying, then maybe we need to say it. I think looking at them sometimes, both in terms of making sure they're updated, we, you know, the, one for Indigenous Peoples' Day, part of the thing is asking that it be declared. In our state, it's already declared, so do we need to have a resolution asking for that? Or, you know, you know, really looking at these things, and we don't update as often as we perhaps should. And I, and partially it's because there's a lot of things on people's plates, and all of a sudden, it comes up. And, you know, several of us have experienced this as presidents, and we look at the agenda and we say, oh, that resolution needs to be on the table, and we just pull it out and we just update the dates on it, you know, type of thing. You know, other times, we have really looked at the wording. So, so that's what I'm, a couple of things that I'm playing out in my head. What's our purpose? If it's to create an awareness, to build, affirm an awareness, affirm something, why it's important, then we should be upfront with it. And I'm afraid, I mean, I just have a concern, the consent agenda, if it's just on there and nothing else is said, we've lost its purpose, and we should really think maybe it's not appropriate. But anyway, I'm, I'm just processing.
Ms. Maple?
I think that, well, I guess Ms. Burnett didn't share if she was in support of then having it read at another meeting or the same meeting. But I, I do think the intention is to affirm and that it warrants being read or else it just disappears like everything else does on the consent agenda. I think that the, the goal is to reduce the potential harm of a vote taking place and also reduce the potential harm of having to, after the board, and we trust and past boards have approved a resolution, that these resolutions don't warrant public testimony over and over and over again. But I do hear what you're saying, Mr. Doran, that, well, then what's the point? And I do think that it does need to be affirmed. I think that is the point, and that we can't just bypass it altogether. Or like you're saying, why is it there?
Ms. Maratti? Go ahead, Ms. Burnett.
Okay, I apologize, Ms. Maratti. So just because, Mary, that Ms. Maple just said what she said. I am totally okay with the board wanting to read these, however we do it, the same meeting, a different meeting. I understand the want, the need, and the necessity to be able to affirm to the, to some of these, absolutely. But as Ms. Maple has stated, my want with moving these to the consent agenda is to limit a lot of that hateful vitriol that we seem to experience a lot of. A lot of, and I know that we can't escape it fully. I know that public testimony can still come and they can still testify on these things. But my hope is that this being on the consent agenda, like Ms. Maple said, prevents those harmful votes, those harmful words, and allows us to recognize, affirm, and then move on with our work. And so it's still honored, those people are still appreciated, they are still shown that we are recognizing, and then we're able to carry on.
Ms. Maratti?
I just want to thank everyone that's spoken on this. I agree wholeheartedly that by reading it, we are still affirming it, and that is the why, for me, of the resolutions. My question is, can people testify on reports when it's, when it's under reports on an agenda?
For non-agenda items and reports, that is the current open public testimony time.
But under the, under the item, under reports?
There's no public testimony on reports and information to the board.
Thank you.
Ms. Maple?
So, logistically, if we are, I don't know if we are at a consensus on this, how do we proceed?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, you know, we've talked a little bit about this. Currently, the agenda and the setting of the agenda, that resides with the role of the president. And so they get to make those choices. We don't have clear policy or administrative regulations. So this is strictly a change that the president can implement. Yes, Ms. Maratti?
Can we make it a policy?
That, it would be great for us to, but we'd need to vote on it as, like, put it in. I would say more administrative regulations than a policy. But it, currently, there is none, so we're not violating anything. We've just been doing it however we had in the past.
May I follow up?
Yes.
Under agenda, meeting materials, I mean, it talks a lot about the types of meetings, action items, how it's prepared. I think it could go under board policy. It could also go under AR, but AR is not board-approved. So I think something like this.
Chapter nine, all the ARs are board-approved now.
That's right.
Dr. Minert?
I did consult with AASB, too, to see if they had any recommendations on alternative ways to consider resolutions. And while they didn't necessarily have any different ideas for us along those lines, they did recommend if we had a policy or a AR to link it with AR 1150, which is commendations and awards. It does mention resolutions there, and we would need to flush that out because it's pretty basic in terms of their model policy. But that might be a place that we could either put policy or AR at the board's discretion. Yeah, 11, 1150 commendations and awards, and that's in AASB's model policies. And no, we, we don't have it yet, but that's, that article will be coming up in front of the board soon.
I would be in favor of creating, having the admin create an AR or something of the such that lays out how we do this, just because I know that for the public, there will be some that may question how we're doing and what we're doing. And if we have it laid out, it would just make it a lot easier for us to point it out and say, here's the AR, this is how we do it.
Ms. Anderson?
So I'm in favor of us putting it in the consent agenda. I don't have a problem with it getting read or not read, because it's in the agenda. It's, we highlight it on our webs, on our webpage. People see our printed agenda, they know what's going to be on that printed agenda. And I just think it, it causes more fluidity and us moving our business consistently forward. I don't think it demeans or, or any of those things. We are acknowledging, it's, it's there, it's on our website and all those things. People, they are, are all the time scrutinizing or perusing our agenda in the paper and seeing what's coming that precipitates, you know, whether or not we get a room full or not a room full or whatever. And I, I do think we are honoring what we intend on honoring in this manner. I just think it's, it's clean and it's efficient, and I don't have a problem with, with moving it this way.
Mr. Doran, was that a hand or just, yep, Mr. Doran?
One of the things that crossed my mind is it's, I think it's within our policy and AR ready. You know, we're taking action on it, we're voting on it, whether it's on the consent agenda or not. You know, I was intrigued by a comment earlier on about, there's maybe a sunset idea of it, and it could go under reports, it could be voted on, and it's, and we could highlight it under reports. These are the recommenda, these are the resolutions we've passed for this year. And avoid taking a vote on it, because what I've noticed over the last several years is part of the objections and conversation around the resolutions has come from the board, in some cases more than from the public. And so how the board itself handles that, you know, should be part of our conversation. There, I think it is important to go through, take a look at the resolutions as proactively as we can, because in some cases, board members have had concerns with a few words that got in the way of their feeling comfortable supporting it or not. And maybe we can, you know, figure out a way of, of doing that. In other cases, it's, board members have, are just absolutely, period. And that conversation has sometimes caused friction that perhaps we, perhaps we could have avoided. In other cases, it can be a good conversation, so I don't want to totally obliterate that. And, and so, as I'm looking at it, is I'm looking at it not just in terms of public testimony and what may draw people to come in support or in opposition. And, and I think that when we get to public testimony conversation tonight, but public testimony supports and opposition are good, that can be healthy. Sometimes it's how that takes place, and the civil discourse, if you want, conversation that happens. So, but I am concerned in terms of that we do it in a way that it meets our purpose. If our purpose is to affirm that we may get known, this is our stance, that for those that are recurring, that do come up every year, you know, there are ones, like I say, Safe and Secure Storage of Firearms, as one example, may be a recurring one, or it could be, say, that's on record, we don't have to do that one. The others, the month change, the dates of the month change, or the year, or that type of thing, so. That's a different story. Or, you know, there can be other resolutions that, that come up. I'm thinking of the school funding resolution in 2023, that was specific to funding that year. It was written for one time use, but it does support funding for public education. It stands, we've passed, we don't have to go back and redo that one, type of thing. So I'm, I'm trying to make those distinctions and see where we are, both in terms of board discussion and supports for the various resolutions, as well as public testimony.
Maple?
What a reasonable path forward to be a board member, work with, or maybe a board member doesn't need to be involved, but work with Ms. Dillard to draft a potential AR to then submit to the board to see if it, I don't, I don't know, like, logistically, like my last question, what, what we would do, especially because it sounds like we might want to evaluate how, how robust of an AR it is.
I, I don't know, part of me feels like we might be overcomplicating a process if we, like, I think it would be good to have an AR that says, here is how we're going to do resolutions. I don't know that it has to be like, let's jump right to it, we can see what it is. We currently aren't violating any policies or AR by making a decision and trying it out. That's my take on it. I'm very, personally, very comfortable with saying, let's have it in the consent agenda, and I like the idea that it is read as part of information reports, it still honors it. I go by the, you know, Hippocratic oath, do no harm. I think what our past board practice has been, has been harmful. I've been a part of it, I've heard the testimony, I even went back last year and listened to testimony from some of them, of people begging us to stop doing this, that this is hurting people. And so I, I would like to honor all those past people and not put future people through that pain. Ms. Maratti?
Can you clarify simpler what you just said? Are you saying that you don't want it in policy or you do want, in AR?
I'm saying that I think it's good that we should draft something so a future board has clear direction. I don't think it has to be done before we make a change. I think we can decide what we're doing and clarify through AR what it is, but we are currently, don't have any AR, so we are not breaking an AR by making our change ourselves. And then we can vote and approve it and have something in AR so future boards, especially whoever or however it goes after the election, we have something for, for people to lay on. It's, I think Timmy is the one who usually says it, like, this is our, our roadmap and our guideline. If it's not in your AR or policy, then you're flying blind. Ms. Maratti?
I, I mean, I support that, but I, I would, I want to stress that an AR needs to be voted on ASAP, in my opinion, just because we, we're coming upon resolution season, and it would be nice to have guidance during that season.
And so I think it would be my recommendation, if you want to vote on the AR, that it would move to Article Nine, because generally, the board doesn't vote on administrative regulation, regulations unless it's within that board chapter. And so I think if you would, like, if I'm hearing consensus, and I don't know that I am, but if I do hear consensus from the board that they would like to vote on this AR, that we would find somewhere within Article Nine that that fits. And how we could move forward with that, Diana and I could work together to create a draft, get it out to the board for feedback like we normally do on policies and ARs, and then bring it forward, you know, at a upcoming future meeting if the board wants to vote on it. Now, as President Hardy said, it doesn't restrict going forward with this practice currently. I think it seems like there's consensus around the, the major points here that the board could adopt and move forward, and I think that's certainly under the president's purview to move in that direction. But if we wanted to codify it in policy, we could do that.
Ms. Maple?
I would like to suggest for the efficiency of tonight's meeting, to be able to move on to the next thing, that that would give us the ability to move forward. And then if Dr. Minert and Ms. Dillard worked on that, that would also provide the opportunity for us to make sure that the points, especially that Mr. Doran was hitting on, that we ensure that when we do put it into policy, that, that we've fully addressed the, the points that Mr. Doran was bringing up.
Mr. Doran?
With that is, I really don't care about an AR, I don't think it's needed. But if we do it, what's the purpose? What is the purpose that it's addressing? And I'm not clear in my mind what we're trying to solve with this. I do know, yes, there have been people on, well, particularly the LGBTQ History Month or inclusion, that's the focus of that, that came out of the Diversity Committee recommendation of the board passed years ago. Some people, like, why do we have to come deal with this every? Some people, like, why do we have to come deal with this every, and sometimes not every year? But sometimes, yes. And some people make very hurtful comments. There are those who have concerns with the, the Girl Child, International Day of the Girl Child, the International Women's Day ones. The, as specific ones that in recent years have gotten some controversy. But I'm trying to figure, how do we meet our, what is our purpose in having a resolution? And how do we support that purpose? The, because sometimes some resolutions are going to be more controversial than other times. Especially if they're in support of something that is relatively new. Indigenous Peoples' Day was a controversial piece, you know? Black History Month can be controversial, you know, in different places. So what is the purpose of our passing them? And then looking at it that lens, which ones we do? Maybe we do have too many. Maybe we don't have enough. I, you know, but what is the purpose of doing them? How we put them out there? And if we're going to ask an AR to be written, it needs to be in terms of what of, what is our purpose of having the, having a resolution that comes up on a regular basis? I do think we, we have to be mindful and sensitive to hurtful within our community. And, and that can be for various groups as well as specific groups. And we need to be sensitive to that. Other times, maybe that's part of our, it raises an awareness, it's there for a reason.
Ms. Maradi?
I think a question was asked is why, what's the purpose of the AR? And in my opinion, the AR provides required guidance to future board presidents that may not want to follow this process. Or even, I mean, they don't, wouldn't even have to, to consent the board. They would be able to make that change of not doing it. And I think this keeps it clear and effective to put it in an AR under the nine, Chapter nine, so that the board has to approve it.
I'll put myself in, as far as like the reason why we do resolutions and all that. I think the reason why we read our mission statement before every meeting, you know? It's to provide excellent equitable education, but in a safe supportive environment. And our resolutions say that we want all of our students to feel included and to feel seen and to feel recognized. And I think that's where a lot of it comes. And by affirming that, you know, the mayor, the assembly, I forget which assembly member asked me a few years ago, like, wow, you guys do a lot of resolutions. Why do you guys do that? Well, the mayor does proclamations and that's how they handle it from their side. Dr. Minert doesn't make proclamations. The board is the elected body. And so this is how we proclaim, you know, Military Child Month. This is how we go about that process.
Mr. Doren?
Just to clarify, I appreciate the why of the, and I think it's an important why to have an AR. The why that I was specifically addressing is why resolutions. And I think you just answered that, is to make sure that all our students are, see themselves as being recognized and affirmed. Which says whether we do it on a consent agenda with resolutions read, as maybe the exception within the consent agenda, we're not reading the whole consent agenda, but we're doing that. The, or they'd be read at the time of information, but I would strongly say do it in the same meeting. The, or they're, whether they're done as individual actions. But it's coming down to really, why do we have the resolution? And if there's not a reason for it, then maybe time for that to go away.
I also, as a teacher, you know, one of the last things that's part of all the resolutions is we're empowering our staff to celebrate and proclaim and talk about. And that is also, you know, a point of a resolution is to say, you should be honoring Veterans Day and you should do education around why Veterans Day exists for each of those different resolutions. So it sounds like we have a consensus, but since the president is the one making this thing, I want to make sure I have the backing of the board. Are we okay with moving forward for the resolutions for this next meeting and the meetings after that? Moving to consent agenda? And then the same meeting is what I'm hearing more of, appearing in information and reports just to be read?
I agree.
I, I agree. And I would also say I would like an AR to be developed.
And I think.
And I'm not, I'm not necessarily worried about whether we vote on it or not.
If it's in Article nine, it needs to be voted on. But we can definitely have Ms. Dillard and Dr. Minert work on something like that. And then it would be added to an agenda to vote and approve and become a part of our Chapter nines. Mr. Doren?
I can live with being on the consent agenda. My preferred piece, but I can, and that we read it. I would suggest that perhaps let's go forward, we, we can go forward with this if we're, if we're kind of in agreement. That we go forward with this and see how it plays out and see how it works. And then write the AR, you know, in line with, you know, if, so we don't have to keep coming back and tweaking. And I, I think that Ms. Maradi's point is good, that it would be helpful to future boards, not only to the president, but to the board as a whole, to know kind of what our process is. And we might want to have further conversation on how do you get, how do we review the continuations or those types of things? But at least to get, get moving this year. And we have several that are right in front of us that we, we move forward the process with the idea of putting a, an AR together. And based on what we, what we see and feel and how it works out. And if it's not working, then we can adjust that without having to go back to an AR.
I think it outlives us. There will be a point in time when none of us will be in this room and a whole different group of people will be the school board and the superintendent. And no, you've only got a few more weeks. So having it written in AR and policy helps future boards understand the process and procedure. So we don't lose the wealth of knowledge when we lose a person. Okay. So I guess the next topic of conversation is around public testimony. And I can break the ice on there. We talked about it at, you know, previous board retreats. I can see one of two ways, and I'm still kind of open to both of them. One where we spend up to an hour and sometimes more at the start of every meeting before all of our other work, listening to things that are not on our agenda. And for me, that seems counterintuitive to accomplishing the work of the board. I would like us, like I said before, to work on being effective and efficient in getting the work done, especially we have so much policy to go through and that. That either we receive the feedback from, or what year, why am I blanking?
Mr. Seedorf.
Yeah, Mr. Seedorf. That we don't have to have non-agenda public testimony at all. So that is an option on the table. Or moving it towards the end of the agenda before board comments, I think would be another applicable way to say, we're going to get through the actual work. And then that, I would really like to see us, though, have more listening sessions because so much it's public talking at us. And then we can't talk and ask, like, we can ask questions, but it's not, it's not conducive. I would like to see us have more listening sessions once a month in some way to have a dialogue with our community instead of talking at each other. I think that was the most powerful thing to come out of the budget, was having those meetings and talking to each other. I don't think we solve problems with somebody sitting here and us talking at each other. So ideally, I would love to see that definitely become a thing that we do as well. Ms. Maradi, then Ms. Maple, then Mr. Burgess.
I support all of that. So putting it at the end of the meeting and adding a monthly listening session, maybe we could break it up. And also Anchorage School Board has a student comment section at the beginning of their agenda. And so I would love if we do this to add that so that students can testify and then go home, do homework, go to sleep at a decent time. They don't have to wait till the end of the meeting. That's not fair to our kids.
Very student centered.
Yeah, so I would love that.
Ms. Maple, then Mr. Burgess, then Mr. Doren, go ahead, guys.
When you're talking about listening sessions, are those, is your vision of that, that those are oriented to specific topics? Or, or does that, well, sorry, that's my question.
Okay, so to me, so I, just to give that answer, my thought is often I feel like sometimes people come in with a prepared letter and they've saved up and they've been worried, like, they want to get somebody's attention and want to talk. So I don't want to limit it to a specific subject. I want them to be able to speak truth to power and power to be able to talk back and ask questions. And give them the opportunity to have that dialogue. Where writing an email, we get a lot of emails, that can get lost in the, it's just, and picking up a phone. I know I say it all the time, like, my phone is on the website. So few people actually do that and that's intimidating. So just saying, if we're not going to have a public testimony thing right at the top of the meeting, finding some way where people reliably know they can come in and talk to some of the people actually in charge instead of having to make an appointment to talk to so and so. I, I don't want this to be seen as us not wanting to listen to our community. I just would like to listen to our community and not also be up till midnight. So, Mr. Burgess, Mr. Doren, and then Ms. Anderson.
I, I appreciate this discussion very much. I would certainly be hesitant to remove public testimony on non-agenda items from our agenda completely. Because I think it is an important opportunity for people to come in and, you know, voice things that aren't on our agenda. Things that, I mean, we've had things brought to our attention in that way before. And so I think it's an important opportunity for people to be able to have that time. I also agree that I'd like to get our work done first so that we're not having to make decisions when we're all bleary eyed and frustrated from a long night. Our decision making will be better if we, if we can, A, do it when we're not exhausted. And also, you know, sometimes, especially recently, public testimony has been emotionally charged. And that is hard on the board as well. So being able to be in our best minds and our, and our best selves is, I think, an advantage for everyone. But I, but like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to remove it completely because I do think that it's important that we give people the chance. And I also would like to speak in favor of the, of adding student comments specifically for students in our district. Whether they're, you know, in a brick and mortar school or homeschool or one of our alternative programs. I think it's important to give students an opportunity. And by adding that student, student commentary or student testimony to the agenda early, that allows, allows students to get back home. But having it on the agenda also encourages students to show up and invites them to the table. So I really think that that's a great idea. And I, I would be interested in hearing from Anchorage about, you know, if, if that, if they accomplish that goal too of inviting students, to hear more from them.
Could I ask one follow up about the student testimony to Ms. Maradi, Mr. Doren, and Ms. Anderson? When Anchorage does that, is it student testimony on anything, both agenda and non-agenda, to allow them to put input without having to stick around for an agenda item?
I'm bringing up their policy right now. It's their board policy nine, three, two, three. And prioritizing student testimony. Let's see. So it is the recommendation of school board member Carl Jacobs and board president Margot Bellamy that the Anchorage School Board prioritize student testimony and public participation in regular and special meetings of the board by making the following modifications to board policy nine, three, two, three. The first one is to prioritize student testimony during the first hour of public testimony to include student testimony on non-agenda and action items. And two, providing special reserved seating for students in the boardroom with an unobstructed view of the dais. Educate all students. It doesn't say in this memo, but I can keep looking.
It said action items, which implies non-agenda.
Oh, that was your question, if they can speak on agenda items. Yeah, so yes, yeah, both.
Mr. Doren?
I like when you, we're talking about listening sessions as well. That's separate from public testimony, I think that, and actually I was mindful of, must have been at the September ASP Academy in Anchorage. Because it was the previous board that was there. We actually had almost all members there, not everybody, but majority. And one of the things we talked about as one of the actions we would like to come out with was having regional listening sessions, you know, you can call them what you want, but do those regionally. And I, I think that would be, be helpful and good. I feel very strongly not messing with our public testimony right now. The issue is not the public testimony and I, itself. It's sometimes the tenor of it. And that's a different issue, separate. I am very concerned that if we move the public testimony to the very end of the meeting, then we could make that extremely late. It's already challenging for people to come early. And the, the, the fact that, and I'm also very concerned about, what's the message we're telling the public? We don't want to hear from you. And I'm very concerned about that because I think that's the message that would be read. I think it is important at the beginning, I think it's important that we have general testimony, that we have the opportunity for someone to walk in and be heard. It is good to have those who have called in, gotten on the list. And I think it has been helpful for public testimony to have that combination of Zoom and in person. I think that's been beneficial for us to be able to hear from the public. And in general, a lot of times it's, there's, there's lots of good stuff to be heard. Things that need to be on our radar or people who come in and give us good news. Give us positive input. I think overall, we've handled it well. And, and, you know, once I look at recent presidents and current president, you know, you've, you've handled it well. and, you know, once I look at recent presidents and current president, you know, you've, you've handled it well. And it reflects more on the individual speaking positively or negatively than it does on us as an organization. I do think that it's mindful that we are in a school setting. We are an educational institution. We have students sitting here and, and we have students who listen. And the things that we're trying to promote for students and model. I will say like the last board meeting and with board comments, people modeled from the board. We, we do that. We model that conversation. And I think the board did that well the other night. So I'm very concerned about moving that public testimony. I think that where we can make sure we're modeling, we are teaching our kids. We're teachers as well up here. And also I think modeling for the community is, is important. And I do think that our community awareness is growing with it. I think it was fascinating, the assembly meeting last night, there was a different, or the other night, there was a somewhat different tenor than previous two meetings. Interesting commentaries in the paper recently. Our community is growing. We're still recovering from five years ago, five years ago in lots of ways. But I, I don't want to cut out that public testimony. I don't want to give a message that we'll be, we'd rather not hear from you. I think we can deal with that. Concerns around how messages are delivered so that people understand. How they present something is important to how it's heard. So it's a productive use of their time. So I really think that we, we have a good system. I think it has served us well. I think we have some wrinkles right now. And, and I do think that having actual listening sessions like we do with the budget piece and stuff has been, you know, kicked around a number of times and it would be a good thing to act on it. And you've shown yourself as board president to, to act on some of these and bring these conversations tonight to the forest.
Ms. Anderson.
So I was just going to comment, I think, on our listening sessions. You know, we had our board training with Alicia Howdy. That was a component that she was stressing about how we could do that to take some of the angst off of us and that it would give us the collaborative peace with our community to be able to have those sessions across our community and be able to engage them in, in the way that you're talking about. I think the, the budget cycle kind of gave us a clue how that could be done. And I know years ago, we used to have things called round tables at various locations. And, you know, I think we're making effort to do that. So maybe we could just review some of that work that, that she had presented to the board and see how we can implement that to start to take some of the stress off of us and, you know, really engage and give a platform and an opportunity for our community to be able to talk to us and, you know, air some things or inquire about actions that we're taking or, or future work that we're trying to get done. Because it's about student focus, it's about student concerns and, you know, what we're going to try to provide for them and so that they are able to achieve their, their goals.
Ms. Maple.
I sat through, I went to a training today that Alaska Children's Trust does, it's called the HOPE Training. And it's a replacement for what they used to do, the adverse childhood experiences training. Now it's a, a training that teaches you about ACEs and then also teaches about positive childhood experiences. And I asked the trainer if a situation where somebody is given a public microphone, a microphone, a, 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 what am I, a platform, thank you, Ms. Anderson, a platform to share hate speech or to bully, if that would be considered to a child listening, an adverse childhood experience. And it would, but, you know, we have our list of 10 ACEs and that's not bullying, racism, prejudice, discrimination is not on that list. And she cited the Philadelphia ACEs Study that happened after the initial ACEs Study that did include discrimination, racism, bullying, and determined that there were the same correlations as the other ACEs that we know of, of divorce, exposure to, to substance abuse, an incarcerated parent, experience abuse, experiencing abuse. And so we, we actually have real data, long-term collected data that says that when kids are exposed to these things, there are long-term negative effects on their health. And we don't tolerate bullying in schools, we don't tolerate it from a board member. Well, we shouldn't. We don't tolerate it from our administration, from our educators. And I think that we found ourselves in a precarious position like school boards across the country where for some reason, we do tolerate it during board meetings. And I can tell you as a grown woman that ran for this office, knowing full well what I'd be exposed to, it is horrific to sit up there and listen. There are people at every meeting and in our emails constantly writing that are saying specifically, "My partner, the chi- the parent to my children is mentally ill, is existing in a dark space and is a threat to children." It's unacceptable. I can't bring my kids to board meetings. I won't let them listen from home because what they would hear is unconscionable. I can't imagine that the way I feel as an adult that signed up for this, what a child being exposed to that would experience, what their experience is to hear those things over and over again. So I agree, we're in a really, really untenable position that like, if we say we want to move public testimony or remove public testimony that's on non-agenda items, that, that the reaction will be what the reaction will be. But I don't see a path forward right now where we are able to address what's going on without making a broader change because we unfortunately can't stop somebody when what they're saying turns into hate speech. And I would pity a board president that was asked to do that. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that that's a fair thing to expect of any board president, President Hardy, anybody that's served before or after. But I don't think it is acceptable to let things continue as they are. And, and even with that said, you know, I recognize that right now, saying this outright, being very direct and clear about what it is that I have a problem with will beget more bullying testimony at our next meeting. That will be a direct response to me saying these words out loud. And that is inappropriate because there is no place at our meeting. This conversation itself, having to be explicit and direct about what I am, the reason that I have concerns, doesn't even have a place at this meeting because we are not making policy on trans people. We're not making policy on gay people. Like a lot of this is relevant to the work that we do. So they waste our time when they're here saying it and now I'm wasting our time continuing to discuss it. But the thing that isn't a waste of time is trying to protect kids and that's our job. So, I mean, our job is to be student-focused, so that includes protecting them. I don't know what that means we do, but that's, that's where I am.
Ms. Maradi.
Thanks. Like Mr. Doran said, the newspaper did write a piece about public testimony recently and how awful it's been because it has become such a distraction from the work that we actually really have to do. At the retreat, a comment was made, they said, "Our lack of response to the hate speech, to the bullying, to the misinformation, our lack of response is a response in itself." And the expert in that room, the expert on school boards agreed with that comment, that by not doing anything, that's a response in favor of what we're listening to. In the past, I have been told by past presidents that we cannot make this change until this year, when our attorney even agreed that we could implement strategies to help the situation. So now is the time to make this change so that we can get back to the work that we have to do and stay student-focused.
Mr. Burgess, then Mr. Doran.
Thank you. I just want to say for the record and for the listening public that I absolutely agree with everything that Ms. Maple said. So you can come at me too. And one of the things, so, you know, to, to your point, Mr. Doran, I, I do, I do understand that this change will likely be unpopular with many people, particularly those who come and testify a lot. Again, I don't want to remove it from the agenda entirely. I, and I, and I, I'm, I'm hoping that that will show the public that we do want to listen. We just want to get our work done first. And if we do implement the listening sessions, which I fully support, that also shows that not only do we want to listen to our public, but that we will actually go to them instead of asking them to come here to us. And so I think that's a, that's a really important aspect to this, actually. If we're going to move public testimony, I, I absolutely think that those listening sessions should, should move forward as well, even though it means another night that we'll all be occupied. It's worth it. And, and, you know, being able to go out to various parts of our community and have those sessions there, I think is really meaningful and will allow more people to, to, to come and talk to us. Also, it'll give us the chance again to have a dialogue. One of the real challenges that I have with the public testimony being first on the agenda and our board comments being the only place on their agenda where we can respond and that's at the very end, I mean, that's, that's a big problem. I don't know if any of the people who testify are staying up to listen to us, respond to them. I, I kind of doubt it in, in many cases. I mean, I know some of them do, but, but I don't know that all of them do. And, and so we can't actually even address the issue with them. We can't help correct misinformation if they are misinformed. It, it makes it very challenging. So, yeah, I think there's a lot of good reasons to move the testimony to the end of our agenda on, specifically on non-agenda items. Agenda items, they can still comment at the beginning of each agenda item. But I do think that those listening sessions are going to be really important and hopefully will help to alleviate the narrative that people might say that if, if we move, you know, public testimony. We are not trying to silence anybody. We want to hear from our community, but we also have work to do.
So if I may chime in real quick, I apologize, Mr. Doran, I know you were quit, um, next. So I don't disagree with anything being said tonight in any way, shape, or form. I do agree, testimony has been absolutely horrific. I think people have been absolutely horrific. And I will never even try to understand how somebody can come forward and look somebody in the eye and say half of the things that get said. I 100% though, am very concerned with all of the optics involved in this. I guess is all I have to say. I have a ton of feelings both ways. I do not like the testimony. I do not like how people are being brought to the mercy of their knees almost with some of this. It really does put a bad stain on the rest of the meeting. It makes doing the work harder. I, I don't disagree with any of this. I 100% validate everybody's feelings on everything. I just will say that we will be damned if we do and damned if we don't. And I'm very concerned with what will happen if we do move this.
Mr. Doran.
Several things. One is on the listening session type of thing. I believe I sent it to both of you, the North Star Cafe outline that Ann Short did on, when she was superintendent here, those opportunities. So there are different models and that's not the only one, they're different. I think that keeping in mind that some people miss, and I will say abuse, the public mic. I've reflected that how many of them are in my age demographic? Not completely, but a lot. The, so the reflections I've gone through and some, when I was walking the other day, thinking in terms of passage from a book that someone read who prefaced it with that it was pornographic. And I missed the opportunity to posit perhaps because it was pornographic, it should not be over the air. And students can be listening to it. And if their objection is that, I should have caught that in some way. What I've been thinking about is in terms of, this is some people. Most people who come to testify really, I think, have tried to be thoughtful and respectful. And even when their opinions have differed strongly from others in the room, they've tried to maintain that, give their, their point of view, but still be respectful and thoughtful with that. Others have not and they've taken very personal hits, insults to board members or to people in the audience or to people in our community. And that should not happen. In part, putting on a principal hat and in part, as a board member and different things, times it's come to the fore. We have board norms and I'm, and they're sit in front of each of us. And they were helpful in changing the tenor of some of our board member conversations. We're 100%, but they made a big difference at the time and moving forward. I'm thinking about making, adding those and maybe, you don't want to add to what you read before, public testimony, but part of what we have there, we perhaps could shorten and put a board norms. And we've done a revision, but we haven't adopted them, you know, they're basically the same. But I'm thinking if we add that, and that sets an expectation, which I find really makes a difference. And on a couple of instances where I was presiding, either as VP more recently or when I was board president, sometimes just reminding people in the, in the middle of those, that testimony was worth it. And it did, I have to give credit to our community to step up to it. And similar conversations in this chambers were on, were on a couple of comparable issues markedly of better tone than in other bodies within our community. And so I think people try to be mindful of, we are a part of it. We're part of the school system, we're part of the educational institution. And so you act differently in school elsewhere. And I think if we call upon those better natures of people, we can perhaps turn the tenor, the civility. It may take a little bit of time, but I think we can do it. And I believe in our community to do that, just as I believe in our kids to step up to the plate. I think that it behooves me to try and figure out, how do I move the conversation, call into account, but move it in a way that moves us forward more constructively, but also hear what people have to say? I, yes, the optics, I, I am very much against changing where we have held the testimony, especially at this time. But I think we can do some things, and I, more I think about is the board norms. That's what we expect here, letting people know that. And we can ask them, there, there are some limits as courts have decided things, and I think that may change over time. But where the courts have said basically, you can say pretty much what you want, as long as it doesn't create a actual disruption. And it's interesting, the, the article we read as to what is actual disruption. It's pretty bland. But I'm also seeing a, this came to us as part of a national swell. That's also changing nationally. And if you're looking at local pieces throughout the nation, there is a slow shift. People realize what's going on is inappropriate, just as our, has been in our paper recently. We need to, to change that tenor. So I'm thinking in terms of saying, how do we address it? And I think even, many may not listen at the end of our comments, and I'll wrap up with this. But they do listen. They may not be awake when we say it, but they go back and they listen. And they're aware of it. And I think when we address it, and I have to give great kudos to several of you as board members, the grades with which you have addressed and helped to convey a very important message for our students, for our staff, and for, for our community in the importance of each individual. I, and I think that's the thing that bothers me most when I hear some of the public comment. Again, it's a small percentage, but unfortunately, it's, it's one that we hear. It has a loud ring to it when it is so disrespectful. Whether it's to us on the board, and we take certain things on as elected officials, or what it is to our kids. And our kids listen. I am constantly amazed how often kids would say, oh, we heard you on the news. We heard this. I would never have thought of them listening to the news. We heard you, people who stopped me in the street because they heard my voice on the board. They had met me before, but they heard my voice. And they said, oh, you're here on Tuesday nights. We underestimate how many people listen, and I think our speakers, testifiers, some underestimate how much is heard. If we can turn that tide by how we conduct ourselves and reminding them, these are our norms, this is what we expect here for our kids. Anyway, just some thoughts.
Ms. Anderson, and I'll put myself in the queue.
Okay, I won't be long. So I think there are a couple of things that we do that absolutely work in our favor. When people are doing the negative comment thing or misinformation thing, we will give references to our policy. We give reference to our curriculum. We give reference to the work that is being done in our districts. We continue to highlight things that are being done. I've heard Superintendent Arnark many times come back and say, I want to give some information about testimony that was given tonight, and I want to correct this statement or the misinformation that came before us. I think that's the posture we have to come from. We cannot get into these, you know, if, um, you know, hold on, I'm saying, I'm gonna say. All the stuff that still comes at me right now, sometimes I'm really blown away. Because I remember when I was a little feisty person in high school, fighting for black power and black is beautiful and all this and that. And then here I am on this side of my life, and some of the same things, they still come at me. So I basically, I know why I'm on this board. I'm here for children. I'm here to make sure that they do just what our policy says, our mission statement, that they have somewhere that's safe, that they have a learning environment, that they achieve their academic goals. I've never swayed from those things. When those voices are nationally still being said, and I don't think it's diminished at all, I think it's actually highlighted. And I think it'll probably highlight some more in another cycle. I think these things are cycles. But I think the best thing we do is we give them the information because we've heard so many things that have not been true. Now, I'm not going to argue somebody looking at a medical report. I'm not, that's not my space, I'm not doing that. They can, they quote it from Dr. so-and-so from institutions such and such. And that academic fight is going on and will go on. So I'm not going to try to defend or get into that stream. I will get into the stream of, this is what we do in our district. This is what we provide for our students. This is what our curriculum does. This is what our budget is providing, and things like that. This is what our children have said. This is what we provide. And I will stand on the record of the work that we do because that's what, that's what lasts. Me, not gonna last, I'll be gone, something else, I'll fade. But the work itself is, is continuing. It's the legacy of what we've done, those who came before us, what they've done. The work doesn't, it changes somewhat. But to make sure schools are safe, curriculum is there, children are fed, they're not stressed out, they have adequate coverage, and people who care about them, who affirm them and who encourages them to be the best person that they're, they, they are, that is not going to ever change. That's why we do what we do. That's why our support staff, our teaching staff, everybody who works around our children. That's the only reason why it keeps working. And like I said at the borough meeting, unless you come from some old money where you can go to a choice place, you know, where things are eliminated, you don't have to be faced with those things until you're adult somewhere and you come out from under your protective cocoon. But public education is the only entity that accepts every child. We open the doors, we give them a playing level platform, and we encourage them. We see their weaknesses and their strengths, and we help to strengthen those things. And then we help them soar and fly and achieve whatever it is they can do. Even our, our students who are, have, have, you know, mental diminish or who, students who are mentally challenged or physically challenged, we provide every equal opportunity and foundation under those children so that they can soar. We do it all the time, we do it every day. That's the, that's the perspective, and that's the place I'll always come from because that's the winning place, that's the win-win place. People's emotions, what people think, their belief systems, all of these things, the age demographics that Mr. Doran talked about, all those things are fluctuating things. And who's talking to who, what's coming in and out of your listening gate and ear gate, I can't deal, I can't deal with any of those things. That's why I don't argue about numbers or test scores. I only talk about the results of what children suffer, what the deficit is when they come to school, hungry, cold, don't have clothes, don't have school supplies, and what our, our staff does for them. Because you cannot teach a hungry child, you cannot teach a child who's been traumatized, you cannot teach a child who's hungry, tired. And that's the, that's our expertise, that's our feel. No one can take that away from us. We do that well. We just have to, when this stuff comes before us, the precedence that we can set in this room is, as you've come before the board tonight to testify, we want to remind you to be respectful, to, you know, blah, 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 blah. And so that we set the precedence. It's our meeting. And when that's violated, board president, and like I did, one person who was awful, awful, I just simply kept saying, your time is up, your time is up. Signal, they cut the mic, and we went on with our business. We can't get in this pool of this other place. I, I don't see it as a win if we do it that way. But I do see it as a win when we give explanation, policy, we tell people what our, our budget, what we're doing with the money, all of those taxpayers that come before us, you're not going to make them be quiet. But when we can validate what we're doing with facts and figures and stats and, and results that we've done over the years and centuries, you can argue that all you want to, it's a fact. It is a written stated fact, it's almost in cement, you're not going to change. And that's, that's the thing I would like for us to focus on because I think that's where our power is. That will not make this decide because it's not going to succeed. But I think what it can do is we can be accountable to say, here's what we do as an institution and an organization to benefit our children in this community. And those who are partners with us, they know what we do because they partner with us to get the work done for our children. That's what I think.
So, kind of how I started off, my, there's lots of reasons to make this change. I think one of the biggest ones is efficiency and prioritizing the work of the board. So often, we spend an hour of what is supposed to be a three-hour meeting, sometimes listening to public testimony before we ever get to the work that we have put on an agenda to get through. And during that hour, we have an entire group of administrative staff that were paying their salaries and overtime to sit over there and listen to public testimony. And then we've allowed them to leave, but then sometimes they might leave at the times when we might need them. By prioritizing the work of the board at the beginning of the meeting, that makes sense. The people who we need to lean on for expertise are still sitting here. We're fresh, we're awake, we're capable. We are still taking for anything on our agenda, a full public testimony, for anything that we're voting on. And we're still, I, when I came into this meeting, leaned towards, I don't want to remove it from an agenda. By putting it at the end of the agenda, it is still there, we are still there to listen. It might encourage some people to stick around and listen to an entire meeting and understand what we do because so often I feel like people come, they say their piece, and then they leave. Are they actually paying attention to the work of the board? And too often, recently, the stuff that we've been receiving public testimony on isn't even something under the purview of the school board. So we are using our valuable resources and time, not that those people's opinions aren't opinions that they aren't allowed to share or that they shouldn't be, but it, it's unactionable. We really cannot take no action on any of the things they say because that is not the purview of the school board. And I think if we start doing listening sessions and really encourage and do thoughtful listening where we are trying to find the understanding part with people with diverse opinions from our own and do that regularly, it might, that is what I see, changing the tenor of public testimony. Because I want people to know that I care what they're saying and that I'm hearing what they're saying, and I can ask them questions, and that maybe they'll listen to me and hear my point of view. That's where we make progress. Talking at each other, we're not making progress. We basically created an open mic night, and it's not productive. And so I would rather prioritize and get the work done, and then we can sit and, and have those other listening. And it allows us to be able to comment in our board closing comments to that public testimony right after each other. If it's not on the agenda, that makes a lot of sense. It's the ability to somewhat have a dialogue. Mr. Burgess?
Thank you, and, and I agree with all of that. I think, I won't restate because I think several of us have said similar things. I do want to touch on something that Mr. Doran brought up, and that is the preamble to the testimony. I, I think it's a great idea to add in, you know, here's what's expected of you. Be courteous, respectful, civil, whatever wording we want to use. The preamble is already pretty long, and if it pleases the chair, I would love to have a go at trimming it down. Perhaps we could work together on that. Again, I want to emphasize that, yes, we can, we can address what people say. I, I have very much appreciated Dr. Minor pointing out when, you know, the point, describing our policy or other aspects of, of what folks have been bringing up. And I would hope that if we move the testimony to the end, that perhaps Dr. Minor could actually give, be, have a, have a place in the final comments as well. And, but again, like the, some of the things that we hear are harmful. And if students are listening, which I, you know, I, I hope they do, but I don't want them to have to hear stuff that will make them feel like they are less than. I mean, we had public testimony start recently, start by saying that LGBTQ kids are, I think, four times more likely to consider suicide. And then, and then that person turned around and said that they're broken. And that is not okay. Kids don't need to hear that. That's not why. They have these issues. They have, they, they consider suicide more than straight kids or, you know, cisgender kids because of a lack of acceptance. Irid. But when they have, when they hear stuff like that, and they hear it from multiple different angles over and over again, some of them start to internalize it. Some of them don't know that there are other people like them or that they can reach out, that there are resources available. Anyway, it's, it's clearly harmful. And that's, that's what it comes back to for me. And I, but I also agree wholeheartedly with President Hardy that, that there's also a huge efficiency aspect to all of this. And there are very practical reasons for this beyond preventing harm to students. We've had a couple of people that show up regularly to testify saying things like, you know, I know you're not listening to me, it probably doesn't matter what I have to say, things like that, and, and it's not true. Even though I might disagree with them, I am listening. And by moving the public testimony and the board closing comments closer together, that gives us a, a better chance of showing that we are listening. And, and also having those listening sessions where we go and, and can have actual dialogue, I think, I think, I think that is how we find common ground with one another and how we can prove to people that, yeah, we, we hear what you're saying, and I want you to hear me too. So I hope that, I hope we can move forward with this because I think there's a lot of benefits. And I don't think, despite the reaction- And I don't think, despite the reaction that we're likely to get, I, I don't think that anything that we're doing is saying, "We don't want to hear from the public." Quite the opposite, we're saying, "We want to hear from you better." And we want to be able to do our work efficiently. And that's, that's where I'm at.
Ms. Maple, then Ms. Marotti.
I was just going to ask if we are going to make this change, same question as the last thing, what logistically does that look like?
Well, I'm going off what you told me. Um, and my understanding is that the order of the agenda is the purview of the president, and this is simply if we're not removing it, just reordering the agenda, and so moving it to a different spot, that is underneath the president's authority. Ms. Marotti.
Um, I do think it's under policy, though, or AR. There's an AR that lists the, the, uh, what is it called? I'm tired.
The different agenda items, I guess.
Yeah, and where they go. So I think that might need to be adjusted, uh, in order to make this official. Um, but I just wanted to say, Ms. Maple and Mr. Burgess said that things that are being said are harmful to kids. Mr. Doran said that kids are listening. And Ms. Anderson said that you cannot teach a child that is experiencing trauma. And because of my fellow board members' points tonight, I support moving non-agenda testimony to the end, when kids are more likely to not be listening and being harmed, so we can be a part of their learning and not a part of their trauma.
I feel there are certain elements ahead here of, you know, motherhood and apple pie. I don't want to diminish or take away from the, the perspectives and such, um, and the considerations that we need to have there. I am strongly opposed, and I will make my position clear, uh, moving the agenda. I think that moving public testimony to the end, I think, yes, there's a certain element of the president being able to reorder pieces, and the board being able to reorder pieces. But this impacts the entire board, and I think that's, needs to be, it's not just one person's decision. What I am very concerned about is, again, the messaging. Why are we moving it? The main comments that I hear, including my own, are around the tenor of those comments. We're not addressing the tenor of those comments. We're just pushing it, hopefully, out of sight, out of sound. And I think that, in my mind, really does do disservice to kids, to our role as modeling in an educational institution. The, I, I agree strongly, we need to do something about the tenor of some of the comments. I'm concerned that we lose the positive constructive comments that we should get from the public. They should have an opportunity. Most meetings, we don't go an hour of public testimony. Some we do. Some we have extended, because it's important to hear. The, uh, and those, that's the exception. The placement of it, I think, is important for us to hear from the public at a time that is generally convenient for our community, as convenient as it can be, uh, and yet, being able for us to get things done. But I really want to address the tenor, um, the tone of comments, so that they are respectful, they are, um, constructive, and I think we can set that expectation. And that should be our direction. I think that the, the, the blowback from the community, uh, putting it to perhaps as late at night as we want, becomes difficult and becomes counterproductive. By and large, history has shown us that our public testimony has worked well in the position where it is. I think that, uh, you know, keeping in mind what Sanderson was saying, uh, and that the Superintendent Minor has done at times is, you know, just point of information, this is what it is. I think that is really helpful, really important. There, um, I, I'd like to keep exploring ways that we can, um, guide the testimony And, um, but I, I, you know, with all that being said, I really want to address the, the tenor piece, um, and I am strongly opposed to, to moving, um, uh, public testimony to the end, and I, and I think that's a broader decision than just, because the impacts are much broader than just re, uh, reordering the agenda.
I'll put myself in the queue. I will say, for me, a driving factor, again, is efficiency and prioritizing the work of the board. We have Durham, who we've routinely had to have drop off the agenda. We have Ed Elements, who is calling in. We have Public, who does not want to stay up late at nights, who will better be able to listen to the actual work of the board and reports and information if it's not at 10:00 PM at night. By prioritizing the work of the board and having it be earlier, we are at our best, we are better able to do that work, and we are still allowing the public the opportunity to talk about non-agenda items as a part of our agenda. The board can decide in which order we put items, and we often do. And I don't see why we are prioritizing non-agenda items as the very first thing on our agenda. It seems counterintuitive to me if we're trying to get through work, and we have routinely bumped items to other nights, or said, and it's been even more, I, there's been other reports, that, information reports, "Well, that person's not here any longer," or, "We're going to move that one to the next meeting," and sometimes two meetings to get through things, because it's a long time. I don't think our board meetings should last all night long. I don't, I think that's also a hindrance to people wanting to sign up to be on the school board. We do a lot of work on this board. We meet a lot. I sometimes feel like I see us more than I see my own children on some weeks. If we want to be able to encourage civic service, we also need to be able to get our meetings to reasonable times and get our work done. That is not saying we don't want to hear the public, I absolutely do, and I am okay with having extra listening sessions and also having the time to listen to non-agenda items. But I don't think it needs to be our priority to make it the very first thing in our meeting. Mr. Burgess.
I do want to acknowledge Mr. Doran's concerns and, and, and say that, that I, I actually share many of them, uh, even though I'm ending up on the other side here with wanting to move the testimony to the end of our meetings. I, you know, it, it is, it is a concern. Anything we do is under scrutiny, as it should be. And, uh, so, yeah, it, it's, it's a potential, I, I, I understand the concern of potentially making it worse. I do think that we have the flexibility to change it back if we need to. But I completely agree that, that it is, that there is an efficiency issue here as well. And as I said earlier, um, when you start the night with, you know, challenging testimony that can become emotional or personal, it doesn't put us as board members at our best. It, it, it puts us at a disadvantage, in fact, for, uh, making sound decisions. So, um, and yes, that is a comment, again, towards the tenor, um, but it's not always just the tenor either. There's things that can come up that might be brought up in a very civil way that, um, still can cause an emotional response. And you don't know what's going to get brought up until it, it does. So, um, but regardless, I think, I do think that the efficiency argument is a very good one. And, uh, and I would like to, yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm, I, I don't want to repeat myself, so I'll end there.
Mr. Doran.
A piece that we haven't talked about is the logistical timing. Our board meeting gets broadcast by KUAC starting at seven o'clock. When the, um, start time for the, uh, school board meetings changed from seven to six, one of the considerations was that, generally speaking, by the time we covered the preliminaries and public testimony, then seven o'clock, we were on the air, and the business, if you want, of the meeting was there, so the public could listen in, and that's a very, very important listening piece. It struck me, um, as the Assembly also made an adjustment, um, that, uh, public testimony for them, again, starts at six and ends at seven, so that they, when they go on air with KUAC. So I think that, logistically, it's also very problematic, um, because more likely than not, we will start our business prior to being on the air. And yes, I know we stream, um, but that KUAC listening audience is a, is a very significant audience. And, um, that's, that's an additional concern that I've got, um, with, um, shifting that timing of the public testimony. At least that happens prior to before we go on the air. And when we do go on the air, we are closer in most times to the business. We, we don't hold up business like the Assembly does, they actually wait, will wait, um, until seven o'clock. We have not done that, but by and large, by the time we go on the air, um, we, uh, it coincides with our business conversations for the public, so.
Not seeing anyone else having anything to say. I'm not sure how we want to proceed. I think there is, I think Melissa has dropped off, or Ms. Burnett has dropped off. Ms. Marotti.
Could we proceed the same way that we are proceeding with the resolution? Because it is part of an AR, so an AR, we need to, and it's in the chapter nine, so an AR, or nine thousandths, an AR, we need to come before the board for approval, and we can address it that way.
So, no change until an AR for this one?
Well, no, it's up to the board president. So same like we're doing the resolution change, so board president is allowed to make that decision based on their own opinion, there's all authority to the board president. And, and, and until then the board can vote on the, um, AR change. That's just how I would do it.
So, for the resolutions, it seemed like we had broad consensus, and so I feel more empowered to make that decision. I feel, unless I get that I have broad, broad consensus, more putting myself personally out there, making that decision, which is why I'm, yes, Ms. Maple.
I would, um, I don't want to put you in that position. I would be in favor of handling this one differently than the resolution one, because of the difference in, in consensus. I don't like what that means for the next few weeks, um, but I understand, I, I, that makes sense to me, that this, that we work, work on drafting AR for this before the resolution piece, that we prioritize that. I'm saying "we," I don't mean "we," I mean, um, Dr. Minor and Ms. Dillard, I suppose. Sorry, I know it's a busy time. So that it can come before the board, which will also mean that we can hear public testimony on it, um, and that we can make an informed vote at that time. I say that against all of my personal wishes, and in favor of making sure that we fully evaluate this, um, and, um, and make sure that we move forward, not putting somebody, not putting our board president on the line as being responsible for a decision that, that we might, will feel some pushback on. So, that's where I am on that.
Mr. Doran.
Appreciate those comments, and I would affirm them. I think it's important that this, this is something that has a broader impact. With the resolutions piece, we're actually, we're still voting on them, we're still reading them, there'll still be public testimony on them. Although, much later, it'll be after the fact, if we made this particular change. But I think, I'm mindful, as you were talking, Ms. Maple, is one of the things that John Sidor has, as our attorney, has often said, including in trainings with ASB, um, is that issues that impact the public should be shared with the public. And this has a direct impact. The public has a vested interest in this, as to, in some ways, whether they can come or not come. And, um, especially because they don't have any idea when it starts. But it, it has a public, the, the main point is that it has a, the public is invested in this, they have a vested interest in it, and we should give it the fair hearing, um, in public. So.
Mr. Burgess.
I agree with Ms. Maple and with Mr. Doran. I think that that's the right way to do this, uh, and that I agree that the public, um, being impacted deserves to have their say, too. So, yeah.
I will just also say, since we brought up Mr. Sidor, he did advise us to just not have it on our agenda at all. That was his overreaching legal advice. But we have not taken it in, in the past as well. And then, that was, the main reason is because when you are discussing tenor or being able to control what people say during public testimony, legally, we cannot. They have a First Amendment right to say what they want to say, and it is treading very dangerous territory to try to curtail that First Amendment right, which is why, even with the best of intentions, and reminding people to mind their Ps and Qs, they can choose not to. And that is 100% their choice, and it is not the board's president's job to tell them that they can't, because then they are violating that person's First Amendment right. The only thing we have control over is if we choose to provide public testimony on non-agenda items, which we do not have to legally allow. We have to make sure that we allow the time for the public to weigh in on things that are before the board for consideration and a vote, not just on any manner of items. With that, I think it sounds like moving, Dr. Minor and Ms. Dillard will work on something, and I don't know when we'll bring that forward. It won't be like the next meeting, um, because they need their time, and we'll make sure we have it. And if it is an AR, though, it's still just one single vote. And if it is an AR, though, it's still just one single, though, not the, the same process as policy. Mr. Doran?
And I would say, not the next meeting, but I think this is of enough importance to the public that we don't spring it on them with five days' notice. Therefore, oh, there's an AR on the agenda, and we're gonna vote on it five days later. I think this has broad impact, and that we, we engage the public in consideration. It's my suggestion.
Can I ask for clarification, I guess, on that, on what engagement would look like? I think this would be the first step in terms of the public being aware of a potential change, so I just wanted to make sure that, from administrative standpoint, what you would be asking for us to engage the public, so they understand that this potential change could be coming?
I haven't thought through the specific steps, but it's multi-step. If we say the first time they are going to know, know about it with some broadness, not just if they happen to be listening tonight, or go back and listen to the recording, that the first notice is not Thursday, when it's on, put on the agenda, and there's an AR, and then Tuesday, we're voting it and making it happen. I think it's something that we need to give people more time, because it is, it is a major change, different than, within our community, because the, the custom within our community has been among here, as well as in the other bodies, is public comment at the beginning, general comment at the beginning, and then you move on. And so, that's a significant change that has broad impact, and it could have a very broad impact on who is able to testify. And a quick example for that is, like, people thinking, who come often with their kids until they testify, then they leave to get the kids to bed. Can they leave their house at 10:00, 11:00? Do they have to be listening to the meeting? Because it could be 9:00, the public testimony is, it could be 11:00, we don't know. So, I think we have to engage the conversation. It could be actually part of listening things. So, I don't want to get it, it's too late tonight to get in, and too early in the conversation, but I think it is a multi-step process. And who knows, we could have strong support from the community. So, I, I don't know.
Ms. Maple, then Mr. Burgess?
Just to be candid, it's, this will be all over Facebook tomorrow. It will be, our public testimony next week will be full of it. I don't think that ostensibly, that anybody could ostensibly say that if, in a month, essentially, it shows up on our agenda, that there wasn't ample time to send an email, to come in and testify in person, to do whatever they might have wanted to do. Word spreads fast, look at the past few meetings where, I mean, at the end of last term, where we managed to have a protest assemble in a matter of 12 hours. I, I think there are plenty of people doing their due diligence, listening right now, and they'll do their due diligence, talking all day tomorrow as well.
Mr. Burgess?
I just wanted to point out something with the Assembly schedule that is a little different, in that they have Citizens Comment A and B. They start with Citizen Comment A, which is testimony on agenda items that are not scheduled for public hearing. And then, if they get through that, they go to their, Citizens Comments B, which is non-agenda items. And oftentimes, recently especially, they have not gotten to Citizens Comment B in their agenda.
And anything we vote on is required to have the public comment, so that would be their Citizens Comments A, already built into our agenda. It's just non-agenda items that we're talking about. With that, I would say, are we adjourned? Anyone? All right, we are adjourned.